I'd like to call to order the Islam Meadow School Committee meeting. It is September 18th, 2017, and it is 7:00 PM. As a reminder, this meeting is being both audio and videotaped. I just ask if anyone else is doing so to let us know. Thank you. And if we can all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Perfect. Thank you. And we will do roll call, starting on my left.
Allison Stevens.
Bill Fonseca.
Rich Fitzgerald.
Gregory Thompson.
Giordre Mayu.
Gordon Smith, Superintendent Schools.
Elizabeth Marcy-Boucher.
Valerie Anier, the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment.
Pamela Blair, Assistant Superintendent for Business.
Kathy Solari, Department Secretary.
Excellent, thank you. All right, so we have the approval of minutes. We have the September 5th, 2017, regular meeting minutes.
I make a motion to approve the September 5th, 2017, regular meeting minutes.
Okay, motions made.
I'll second.
I have a second. Any further discussion? Hey, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed nay. And that carries forward 5-0. Moving on, we have the approval of the September 5th, 2017, executive meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve the September 5th, 2017, executive session meeting minutes.
Okay, motion made.
I'll second.
And seconded, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed nay. And that carries forward 5-0. Thank you. All right, moving on, we have committee and subcommittee communications. And I'll start with our student rep, Ally.
The first few weeks of school have been going great at the high school. We won our first home football game on Friday night. And open house is next Thursday, September 28th, which Student Council will be helping to put on and run.
Any other sports you want to talk about other than football?
You say you'll know. You don't want to talk about it.
How did the orientation go?
Good, good. Orientation went well. Everything went good.
And that was hosted by the student council, right?
Yeah. And I think the freshmen felt comfortable their first week of school, hopefully.
Intact, didn't they?
Have they all found their way around now?
Yeah, I think so. I think the first week was probably a little rough. They were kind of looking like, uh, looking at schedules. But I don't see that anymore, and so they're good.
That's good.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, a quick update. I'll have a Division V meeting on October 18th at the Lower Pine Valley Educational Collaborative. And the topics will be a resolution clinic and a legislative update. So everybody's invited. I will send it out to everybody.
Perfect.
I would pass.
Just had open house at Burchland last week. Super well attended. Saw Mr. Smith walking in. He knew the secret parking spot. And kids are off and running for the year, so all is well.
Excellent. We did have open house at Mountain View. And just speaking of Mountain View, I just said I think they did change the car line and the bus line. I think they reversed it now.
Oh, they did?
Yeah.
Today was first day.
Oh, good.
Yep. So I think in relation to the conversation that we had, they're trying a new one. So it was a little hectic this afternoon. I was there at the school, and people were forgetting which way to go.
Yeah.
So that's all I have to say. So Beth, if you have anything you'd like to add?
I went to Burchland's open house. I just love that school. Burchland's great. The very -- no, but I liked all the teachers, and they're not -- they had some new teachers that seemed really enthusiastic in the seventh grade. And I could see that they were excited, and I know that that's just going to follow through to the kids. Nothing with Eleaf yet. They're just getting going for the year. And we're saying that Willie Ross is having their 50th?
Yeah.
I think it's their 50th.
50th, yeah.
Yeah, 50th.
anniversary coming up, so I'm sure they're going to have some different activities that, you know, try to attend.
Great. All right, moving on, we have the opportunity for visitors to address the committee. Okay, so we are moving on. Moving on down to 5.2.1, Burchland Park gift donation of $500 from Premier Source for the Islam Meadow Youth Safety Committee.
Take it away, Greg.
I didn't know there was anything special about this one.
Well, the Premier Credit Union has been fantastic the last two years. They really stand behind what the Youth Safety Committee is trying to accomplish. And so this is the second gift that they've given to the Islam Meadow Youth Safety Committee.
So I'll move to accept the Burchland Park Middle School gift donation of $500 from Premier Source for the Islam Meadow Youth Safety Committee.
Okay, motions made.
I'll second.
And seconded, any further discussion?
Do our principals respond with a thank you to the organizations that give some large amounts?
We respond with thank yous here, and principals also do. It's coming from the -- or going to, rather, the building.
Nice touch.
Probably this one, you get two thank yous, one from us and one from the committee itself.
Nice touch.
Great. All right, so we just have to vote on that. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed nay. And that carries forward 5-0. Okay, moving on, we have 5.3 for the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction Report, 5.3.1, Curriculum Renewal Update.
Okay, so in your packet I can do a quick update on how the funds were allocated this year. Just as a reminder, this year's renewal budget supported purchases for K-12 ELA, K-12 physical education, as well as 9-12 science. The total budget was $150,000. $50,000 of that was the one-time appropriation that was approved by the town. And that went towards science purchases at the high school. This year, we did something a little different based on some feedback or questions that we had last time we presented one of the reports. And that was that we had all of the departments who were up for renewal create a prioritized needs list. They still went through the evaluation process, but we said, send us what you need. We didn't give them a budget first. Tell us what you'd like. And then the goal is to meet your highest priorities, and with the ultimate goal being to meet as much as 100 -- as much of 100% of your needs as we could. So we were able to do that in all but one case. We were able to meet 85 to 100% of their requests for each department. And you can see the breakdown there. Burchland Park had a total of 39, 170, and that covered 100% of their needs list for PE and ELA purchases. The high school had 100% of the science needs, which included the $50,000. There was a little bit of additional covered for science as well. And then PE.
Can I just jump in on that? If you get the opportunity, get in to see some of the science classes, because the new equipment's being used.
They're already up and running with that.
Yeah, very excited about it.
And then PE was the lowest one at the high school, which was 37%. But you have to realize that their request was almost our entire budget. So we worked with them to just at least meet their highest priorities within that request, which they were happy with. And then you see PE for K-5. Again, that's a small amount, but it was 100% of what they requested at $2,636. And then ELA down there for K-2 and 3 through 5. And I have, if you have questions about what some of that was, I can give you a little bit of update on that. And also in your packet, I included the current purchasing cycle. And we do this, we have it flushed out by the age of resources, with last year and moving forward, being able to have flexibility with if there's a need that arises. Like, last year, we spoke about science, and you'll see that this year, we covered 9-12 science. Last year, we did have one of our departments didn't utilize all of their allocation, and so they gave money to 3 to 5 science for us to provide mystery science, a web-based resource for people to use. And then next year, 6 through 8 sciences on the docket. And those would be, would have been slight revisions we made last spring in order to meet what our highest priorities or needs show up as through the departments.
So I just have a quick question on that. When I look at the 2019, 2020, you have 9 through 12 social studies on there? I know we had been talking about that social studies is going to be getting an update. Will that kind of coincide, or you think that's going to need to be pushed up?
We're hoping. So that's based on when they said the standards could be out? If they're not out, then we would probably revise that, because it doesn't make sense to purchase the resources if the standards haven't been finalized by that point. But they should be out in the spring.
Oh, this year.
They should be finalized, which means it's spring of 2020, which means that they should go out for public comment. When they go out for public comment, it's usually about six months to a year before they're finalized. And they're pretty well finalized at that point. You can have a good idea, and you can begin our needs assessment and take a look at resources, because they won't have dramatic changes after public comment.
The original timeline, I don't know if the commissioner passing last year, if that's going to throw them off or not, but the original timeline was to have draft standards out around December, January of this year. December of this year, January of 2018.
And you still don't know if they're doing that, or if they'll be?
We have, nothing has changed on the original timeline.
Oh, okay.
So there could be by the end of this year, drafts out. They might not be ready for public comment, or they'll at least have an update on where they're headed.
I just want to say, I think this is a great process.
It is.
It's so effective, you can actually feel it.
Yep, oh, good.
Being worked out. And it looks like it's not extremely fair, inconsistent.
It is, you know, because I, like, when we were in Burchland, you know, they were talking about how they've used different resources, especially in science, because the book is from 2000, and there is information in it that, you know, things have changed since then. And just to know that, okay, like, next year, you know, you're going to be getting those resources, and you're not going to have to wait 17 years for any resource.
And it is broken up with, like, core classes and some of the other, like, PE, you'd think people just push that aside because they want to pay for things in English class or math class or science. But you aren't bringing it out.
They got a good amount of funds, but they had a good amount of needs as well. So it was important to kind of give them the resources they need so that they can hit their curriculum as well.
Right.
But you don't want to, you want to balance it, so that, so that's why we decided, let's just have you present what you need as a department, and then we'll do our best to fill it and come pretty close. And the ones I had to tell they didn't get 100%, they were happy with what they were receiving anyway.
In this sense, yeah. Do we have to vote on this? I don't think so, right?
No, no.
I don't think so, too.
No, just letting you know, you voted on the allocation of the funds, so here's how it's being used.
So Valerie, I just have one other question. You mentioned the web-based resources. So we're paying for the web-based resources from the Curriculum Renewal Fund, and then is that an annual licensing fee?
We try to cover multiple, where we budget appropriately, where we can cover multiple years, so that it doesn't fall on the schools.
Okay.
So a lot of them, just like a curricular renewal, they sometimes do a three- or five-year renewal.
So you pay for the whole three to five years?
And you get a discount for doing that, so it costs you less than if you were paying annually. And that's what their licenses are. So very rarely do you find just an annual license.
Oh, okay.
You find them where they are multi-year, and they've kind of included that in. So we've done that for a number of them.
So I was in the social studies class at Burchland, and they had new textbooks
So excited about them.
Last year, and then this year, they have the web-based as well?
Yeah, they had access to the web-based last year. They did class sets, but they're really, Dr. Allen really wants them moving towards web-based, because you'll see later, they're getting close to being one-to-one. And so we have to keep that in mind. Like, how we define resources and curriculum has to change as well. So most of what we purchased for ELA this year as well is our web-based systems.
Do you find that's more or less expensive over the long run, the web-based?
You know, they're pretty savvy. It's approximately the same.
Really?
Yes. In the beginning, they were a little less.
Yeah.
But they're very sophisticated. And what's good about it is that, so for History Live, for instance, when there's an update, that gets updated right away. You don't have to, you don't have this lag of not having money to replace your textbooks, because the student, you know, the student copies are on your computer or your tablet, your Chromebook, whatever you're using. So you're able to, in that instance, you're able to stay current for less money. Original cost is about the same, but if you had a textbook, we're not going to buy another new textbook a year down the road, two years down the road. If you have a license, they're updating that. Same with our curriculum, our math curriculum, the Eureka. We have the paper copies for people, but we've also given teachers access to the online resources, which has planning and any type of revision that they've done. Or they might give you new information around pacing, or they may switch some things based on feedback from the field. So we have access to that, and that, it keeps you much more current.
Are those web-based resources available to students at home if the teacher allows them?
Yes. Yep, and that's the beauty about being web-based.
Yeah.
So if they're able to, some of them can access it at home. There's usually a home connection piece to it, where you may, some of them include, like, a sign-on for parents that gets shared out through the teachers, and, yeah.
Cool, great, thank you.
All right, any other questions on that?
Yeah.
Or comments? Yep, that was nice, thank you. Okay, we're going to move down to new business, 7.1. We have policy GDG, part-time and support staff employment.
Now, this is a
No, I asked the same thing. This wasn't a subcommittee, so no power.
It wasn't a subcommittee. This policy, it's updated usually for three years unless there's a drastic change with one of the groups in the middle of those three years. Basically, what we were waiting on this past year was for the paraprofessional contract to finalize. Is what we use, we use the contracts themselves to give us a base, and we try to stay within the same range of what our first-year employees are making. And then we also use supervisors in each of the areas here to help us see how are they doing in getting substitutes. One area that is extremely competitive is the subnursing. And Kelly LaBumbard does a fantastic job not only seeking out substitutes, but she trains substitutes, so that if we have a list of substitutes and it's out to all the schools, those subs have been trained in the building, and they may also have been trained in different positions, where if we have a one-to-one nurse who might be out, we have a list that can sub for that individual.
Mr. Smith, what does our substitute teacher pay for the
$75 a day.
$1,250. $1,250.
I just wanted to give you.
And then our substitute teachers
We just raised that last year.
And the substitute teachers have to have at least a bachelor's or at least associate degree?
No, substitute teachers have to have graduated high school and can be earning their degree. We do have substitutes, not many, because generally they're in college, but that may sub on breaks. There are some policies, though, in local districts where they differentiate it. They say, okay, if you have a bachelor's, you're going to go up. You know, so if that's something you want us to look at, we certainly can. That would be a policy subcommittee.
Because this will surpass this next year.
Yeah, I know.
The subpar pay is going to surpass the sub teacher pay next year.
Which is a great point. That was something that had been happening with the $65 a day for a long time.
It already was, yeah.
And that certainly, if we want to amend this, we can. You can freeze it.
Well, I don't think we can amend that by much. I'm a little complimentary with our budget, right? You know, we have our budget set for this year.
Sure.
Maybe something to look at for
Well, the other thing would be is to look at the way we pay substitute teachers.
You could look at that again next year.
And that would, that may offset what
We probably should.
I think we do need to.
Yeah. So we can, I mean, we can take a look at that.
Review substitutes in the summer for next year.
Yeah.
Well, should we be part of the budget process?
Well, yeah.
Because if we're going to increase the pay
Yeah.
and want to include that in a budget proposal.
Fill it in for this next, this one this year we're working on this November.
All right.
Do you know the budget, budgeted number of substitute teachers up here?
It's in a lot, it's in a lot of different areas, because you have, you have subs for illness, you also have subs for professional development, so you have accounts in various areas.
Then I also separate out special ed versus regular, so I can report it appropriately at the end of year. So there are a lot of accounts.
Okay.
And we have leave of absences. Yeah.
Yes.
But just to keep up with the parents versus
The forceps, trying to make sure everything
It's a 2% need increase just to keep up.
Right.
So I was just wondering if you had a number of what 2% would cost.
Well, that's what
I don't, but I can get that for
If it's astronomical, then 2% makes a difference.
We're talking for a budget process.
Yeah, well, that's what I said.
Right, that's what I meant for this November, when we start the new
Yeah, well, you know, we can look at what we pay the substitutes, the teachers, and then adjust it accordingly.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
All right, so are we not
We are.
Following on this
I move that we accept policy GDG for part-time and support staff employment as presented.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed nay. And that carries forward 5-0. Great. All right, we have 7.2. We have the Islam Meadow Public School Computer Inventory.
Okay, at the end of last year, during our presentation or celebration of the different accomplishments last year, one of the slides was what we were projecting, that we were going to purchase in terms of different devices, predominantly Chromebooks, at least the last few years, but we also had iPads, if you remember, on that list as well. So this is where, coming through the summer, we ended up. So as you look at each of the buildings, you see all the way on the left, the enrollment of students, then you see the different devices that are in the building. And then in the middle, where it says ratio device to student, that shows you how close, and in some cases, such as Mountain View, where we've actually gone ahead of getting one device per one student. First and foremost, it puts us in a great position for some of the state mandates that have been taking place. This year, we know that our grades four, five, seven, and eight will be testing online. We can add into that sixth grade at the middle school. That should not be a problem. They're getting close to one-to-one. And this has also enabled us, the purchase of, or interjecting more purchasing of Chromebooks has made it much more economical and allowed certain pilots, and now no longer pilots, just regular courses, such as Community Action Learning at the high school, which I believe now has at least two sections, if not three. That's where not only is it a course that was somewhat new to us, where we have students engaging the community and looking at how they become involved in problem-solving, certain issues that they've identified, but they also have a Chromebook that they can use in that coursework and also in all their other coursework. And so it becomes their Chromebook for the school year. As we approach that one-to-one in all of the buildings, we may start looking at, how do we start having, say, teachers allow students to take out a Chromebook for a given project? And what might those projects look like? So we can start to expand our thinking around a number of different things. How do we expand some of the assignments that we're doing and the projects we're doing? And how does this technology and the availability of it increase what we can do in support students and their learning?
Mr. Smith, a technology question.
Sure.
Meadowbrook has 227 iPads.
Correct.
And the high school has zero. Is there a reason why it's that so skewed that way?
Sure, yeah. What we were finding initially, as we started this purchasing, we were staying along the lines of Chromebooks and Macs for all schools. But what we found was that few of the grade levels, possibly second grade, has the most signouts at Meadowbrook, were actually signing out the mobile carts of computers. And the iPads that they had, say, five in each classroom, were getting great utilization. So we started to shift away from, at least at the Meadowbrook grade levels, purchasing Chromebooks and Macs, and shifted more towards iPads. Where at the high school, your work is very diversified. And so there may be things that, and projects and work that they're doing, that they're going to need the creativity of a Mac. There may also be more straightforward project work that they're doing, where Chromebooks can help support that.
Is this something which Ryan Quimby should be reviewing also?
He actually sat down with us and put the chart together.
That's what I asked him.
And along those same lines, this year, the leadership team with Mr. Quimby will be breaking out new standards. We're not breaking them out, we're starting to understand them and figure out what's the best way to implement them. New digital literacy and computer science standards that Desi has drafted.
Chromebook versus Chromebox?
Chromebox, good question, yeah. The reason we put that in there is because a Chromebox is not a laptop-style computer. It's actually like the old desktop. And so Burchland and Mountain View have kept their labs. They still have a lot of mobile carts, but they also wanted to keep their labs. So in those labs, we've used Chromeboxes. We replaced the aging desktop with a Chromebox, which now is less expensive to renew down the road.
Than a Chromebook?
Chromebox is a little bit more expensive than a Chromebook, but less expensive than a laptop.
Larger screen.
I was going to keep that computer.
Yeah.
So what do the two schools use the labs for?
Burchland's still doing keyboarding and other programming. And Meadowbrook, excuse me, Mountain View still does a lot of introductory work in the computer lab. They have a paraprofessional who actually is licensed to teach, and she's excellent. And so they do a lot of their introductory work to different software, but to the computer itself in the lab.
So, you know, going back to Burchland with the keyboarding class, does everyone get to take that? Or is it still just an elective, that if there's room, you take it?
They're in the process of working on some potential revision to that, because we're doing more and more with the keyboarding 3 through 5, so that the students are ready. So they have to take it less and can move beyond that at the middle school. So that's in a revisional phase right now.
Does band throw it off, too? Is that the issue with
The what? Oh, the band?
Yeah, because it's every day.
So my older daughter didn't have keyboarding, my youngest
Is there enough?
Yeah, because I have parents asking about keyboarding and when the kids learn, because we're asking our kids to do so much on computers. And if they don't formally learn, like, I never formally learned to type
I know that I might just do similar
that I'm almost sometimes doing a hunt and peck method. I've gotten much better.
Yeah.
But I see it in my other two, who, they can talk to me and type at the same time, because they've had so much experience on the keyboard.
So they, we, a few years ago, we started having the conversation around moving it down to the elementary levels. And so I know 3 through 5 do have some keyboarding. They, off the top of my head, I won't tell you the programs, but there's some free keyboarding programs that they've been using with the students. And they're using, I mean, 3 through 5 is also using Google Classroom a lot.
Right.
So the students are doing a lot of writing. A lot of the writing is done right on the computers. So they've, we've been getting better versed at that. So they are getting some practice there, so that it's less of an issue because of the schedule.
So is the keyboarding, like, embedded in a certain class, in the classes?
Yes.
So it's not separate?
We don't have a separate
It's now becoming
Huh? It is a separate class.
Right now, it is separate.
It's separate at Burchland.
No, I'm talking about
Not at the elementary.
Not at the elementary.
We don't have a separate
Okay. Because you want, you want it better prepared by the time you get to Burchland.
Yeah.
That's why I asked if it was embedded in the elementars. Okay.
Now, did you have experience with keyboarding?
Yeah, I had it at Burchland. I had it two years.
You had it for two years?
Yeah, I had it six and seven.
Can you type and talk at the same time?
No.
One of the things that we have to do, though, as we continue these conversations, is take some of those programs that we're utilizing and maybe embed them as part of the, part of the start of a unit for a project. So students are going through, every student's going through this project. They also go through circumvane a keyboarding.
Okay.
I don't know that we're doing that across the board.
Different schools are approaching it differently. There will be some, we'll tell you, we'll try to carve out 15 minutes.
Yeah, well, that's why I asked if it was embedded or how it's being, okay, thank you.
It's not an extra body to teach it, so it's embedded.
Well, the other question, the other thing is, you know, there's not much time either.
No.
The schedule's so tight that it all has to, you gotta figure it in.
And the more access the students have to the devices and the keyboards, that, I mean, you could show them where your QWERTY or your Home Key is. They pick it up through the use of it as well. So they find they're not needing much more time than that.
Right, but it's just getting that initial alignment properly.
Right, right.
And it makes, it makes sense to be doing it in the, at the elementary level, as opposed to waiting till we get, till they get to the middle school.
Yep, they started that a few years ago.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you for all that update. Anything else on that 7.2? All right, so we'll move on to 7.3. We have the Isla Mado High School Science Team, out-of-state field trips, starting already.
So yes, you see, basically, they're field trips through April 7th. With April 7th, a scrimmage for the pre-worlds. These are the competitions that the science team goes to, hopefully to qualify for the world competition, which I believe is in Kentucky again. I could be wrong on that. So if we qualify, they will be coming back, most likely to ask for approval to go to Worlds.
Are these all day trips?
For the most part, they're day trips, yes.
And they're all like weekend.
Yeah, I looked at the days.
So they're not missing any school and they're back on the same thing.
I have to commend him. I mean, I really got Mr. Ben Zierman's letter. He raises around $3,000 each year for this. I was pretty impressed with that.
It's expensive to do this.
Do they drive or do they take a bus?
No, they drive.
They do?
Yeah.
I think you have a lot of parent involvement.
Yeah.
With this team, a lot of the parents are involved and help out. You know, I think.
Well, the big, big part of the cost is the registration fee.
It's amazing that much.
I know.
Well, I make a motion to approve the six field trips for robotics, six out-of-state field trips for the robotics team, beginning October 22nd and ending April 7th, 2018.
Seconded. Okay, it's motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
I only have five.
I only have five.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, all right, so.
Six, I don't even think you have the special one to go. He knows something that we don't.
He's assuming they're getting a world.
So I amend it to five. Excuse me, this chair.
Okay, so we have it set for five. And I'll second it. Second it, all right. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose nay. Carries forward 5-0. All right, so we'll leave it at that. All right, moving on to 7.4. We have the high school music department field trip to Colonial Williamsburg, Virginia.
So this is a trip that will take place starting just before the April vacation and then going through that weekend. And it is a trip that they put together before, but they really need at least, I believe, 90 students to make it work. Unfortunately, I think a few years ago, they did not reach the 90 students, so they were unable to go. They're hoping with the approval, they can start to advertise and put together the trip and hopefully get to the 90. So they're gonna have to come back and just make sure they verify that they have the 90. And you see the itinerary of the four days, second to last page.
Now, what is the, I don't remember the timelines for these types of trips. When do they have to tell us that they have 90 students?
They're supposed to be at least 30 days out.
There must be one day of school, that's all, April 12th.
Right.
Friday's a good Friday day.
It says that it'll be paid, it'll be funded by student fees. Is that the students actually paying for the trip? Is that what that means?
Right. Unless they can knock it down with fundraising. I believe it's like $695.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I think that's if they, if they get the 90 to 100.
Students. Yeah, they need the 90. And then you could knock that price down individually with some fundraising.
Yeah, it is.
Cool. All right, I'll move.
Go ahead.
I move to approve the music department field trip to Colonial Williamsburg, April 12th through the 15th of 2018.
All right, motion's made. I'll second it. And seconded, any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose nay. Carries forward 5-0. All right, oh, we are coming down to the end of our agenda here. Of course, we want to say thank you to Don, as always. And we also want to give a special thank you for Ally for being here this evening.
Issue, my man, the school committee is October 2nd, correct?
We do have, we have a town hall meeting that I RSVP'd to Senator.
Right, but October 2nd is 5:30 here, so it's either 5:30 to 7, and then 7 on.
5:30 to 7 is professional development. So Ally, you don't need to be there for that. And then the regular meeting at 7.
Okay, so with that, if I can have a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn?
Okay, motion's made.
Second.
And seconded, and further discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed nay. And that carries forward 5-0. So with that, thank you and have a good night.